Welcome, everybody, to the regularly scheduled Ames District Board Meeting, October 9th, 2022. Now call a meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The flags are right over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have motion to approve the agenda.
I so move.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the October 12th, 2022 District Board Meeting?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. We have any public comment? Told we have no public comment today, so we will proceed. Next is presentations from guests and representatives to the board. And we're thrilled to present or to introduce Shanam McCaslin, Dean of Students with Excellence at Ames.
I'm so excited today to have the privilege of introducing you to an amazing young lady. Her pictures are up on the screen. She began her Ames journey in the summer of 2021, only a couple of months after arriving to the United States. I came to know Sophia seven months ago when she applied to be a student leader at the college. I knew then that she was special, and she's a global learner who doesn't sit idle. Didn't take me long to figure that out. She's made quite the impact in her short time at the college. She has many audience members here who are fans who would agree with me. Truly, when she arrived at Ames, she quickly made the decision to be all in for her education and her American college experience. Recently, Sophia learned that she's been accepted to MSU in Denver, where she will major in, I'll let her tell you more about it, next, starting next semester. We'll miss her, and I know she has some serious dreams, and nothing's gonna stop this young lady. So I introduce you to the remarkable Sofia Cortez-Arevalo.
Hi, my name is Sofia Cortez-Arevalo, and I am from Bogota, Colombia. I moved to the U.S. a year ago, and it has been quite a journey. However, it is sometimes the journey that teaches you a lot about your destination. At least, that is what I have learned from moving away from my family, friends, boyfriend, and everything I thought to be my whole life at that time. Ever since I was little, I dreamt about going to school in the U.S., and when I got the opportunity to move here, I got so excited dreaming about going to fashion school in New York. However, as you can see, I didn't end up in New York. I ended up in the beautiful, small, and smelly grilli. At first, I was unhappy. I didn't understand why I would change my life in Colombia and start all over again when life here wasn't even what I expected it to be. But little did I know that it was actually going to be better than what I had planned. Ames gave me the opportunity to step out of my comfort zone and grow into a new, better version of myself. At Ames, I have been very disciplined with school, getting mostly As in my grades. I have also been very disciplined with the gym. At the perk, I used a personal training service, and it gave me a new hobby that I love, which is weightlifting. At Ames, I got a wonderful job at the Center for Diversity and Inclusion as a diversity peer specialist. Last month, I led an event wrapping up Latinx or Hispanic Heritage Month called Taste of Latinx, where students got to try food from 15 different Latin American countries, provided by local restaurants in Greeley and Denver. My goal was to both celebrate and educate our community on the wonderful contributions of the Latinx diaspora through PowerPoint presentations, quiz questions, and informational booklets made available at the event. You have a copy of the booklets I give out in front of you? Additionally, attendees got to see the chance, got the chance to see Latin American culturally specific dances performed by Studio Columbia and Fiesta Colorado out of Denver. At this event, we had over 215 attendees, which is a new attendance record in the history of CDI hosted events. The CDI is helping me gain experience to pursue my dream job and help people like me that are trying to find their place in another country. Last, but not least, at Ames, I've met wonderful people who have helped me throughout my journey, making me feel like I belong. In the spring, I will be transferring to Metropolitan State University of Denver to study pub regulations and pursue my dream, which is to be a pub regulation specialist in the fashion industry. I don't know what God has planned for me in the future, but one thing that I do know is that it ends up being better than what I expected, just like Ames, which gave me a home away from home. Thank you.
Yep. This is what Ames is all about. And you just told us what Ames is all about. You told us what Ames means to all of the students coming here. And this is the format, this is how we like to do it, about our successes. Your successes are ours. So we're very proud of what we do here. We're very proud of what you're doing with your education. And you chose Ames, and you wanted to share your story. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And good luck to you in the future.
Thank you so much.
Just a little something from you here. Got it?
Next on the agenda, action items. Oh, man, I'm sorry, I missed it. Representatives to the board. Thank you, Dr. B. First is Ames Staff Association, Megan Blazer.
Good afternoon. My name is Megan Blazer. I'm a program coordinator with Agriculture Sciences, Energy Studies, and Industrial Technology here, and I am the Vice President of the Staff Association. And thank you for your time today. Ross is actually at the NACEP conference right now, and this must be the month of conferences. Doug Strauss attended the 2022 Open Education Virtual Conference, the week of October 17th through 20th. The conference featured international speakers sharing ideas on how to increase open enrollment resources on college campuses. Oh, we are, our learning, teaching, and research materials in any format that reside in the public domain internationally created a license to be free for our students. I also had the pleasure of going to the Rocky Mountain Workforce Development Association Conference, October 18th through 20th, and I co-presented with Weld and Laramie Counties on work-based learning initiatives. Also, recently, we were able to purchase popcorn and distribute it to all of our staff across campus. And in true Ames fashion, I did not come empty-handed. And the sweet and salty option there is also gluten-free if anybody needs that. And last up from us is our staff highlights, or the Ripple Report. I know you guys get a copy of those. In general, I just saw a really great theme of kindness, support, generosity, and that that general just solution-centered focus from our staff across our campus, which was really great to read about. There's one in particular I wanted to highlight because it was partially because it was so well-written by Janet Chase honoring and recognizing Becca Herman, the Director of Leadership. Since my first day back in the Sale Department, Becca has been a constant source of inspiration, support, and encouragement. Her deep and abiding desire to operate with integrity and genuine passion for student success has been and continues to be a thing of true beauty. Her loyalty and sincerity exhibited with her colleagues is no less notable. Her gift of viewing complex issues with a clear eye and sense of fairness and multiple perspectives has made her a campus-wide go-to for help in finding satisfactory resolutions for all involved. She is one of the most empathetic hearts I have ever had the pleasure of knowing, and her first response to any situation is one of compassion. The expression that she leads with her heart is inaccurate in Becca's case, though, because the size of her heart is only rivaled by the size of her big, beautiful brain. Becca has the enviable talent of balancing her heart with her mind, leading to find the third alternative when two sides are at odds. She is not one to speak frivolously or participate in idle chatter, but when she does speak, I listen intently because I can be assured that what she says will be valuable. The Sale Department, students, staff, and faculty are all truly fortunate to have Becca as a treasured and critical part of Ames. So I just thought that was beautifully written and honored Becca and her efforts as staff on this campus, and just wanted to make sure that you guys all got to hear that. So thank you for your time again. Have a great day.
Thank you very, very much. Kinda got away, but we ought to give her an opportunity. Any questions, Megan? Okay, thank you again. Student Government Association, Danielle Irwin. Hi, Danielle.
Everybody, thank you again for allowing me to share this space with you. Greetings, esteemed members of the board, Chair Oxziger, Dr. Rothmer, Dr. Bornstein. I am honored to be here as always. And as always, our student leaders continue to work earnestly to advocate and program for our community. October was a very busy month. As you all may know, we had a lot of exciting events. We were very, very fortunate. During the week of October 24th through the 28th, SGA hosted Spirit Week, where students, faculty, and staff were able to participate and enjoy different activities and dress-up days. We had over 100 attendees in total dress up, and over 25 participants won prizes for the dress-up day drawings. So that was really exciting. During that time, we also hosted one of our largest town halls to date. The students were able to engage with their student representatives as well as their peers and have a great time. Many students were able to meet new friends and create lasting connections. I did overhear students at the town hall saying that they really enjoyed our style of town hall that we featured. It was a carnival style, and they felt welcome enough and they felt comfortable enough to be themselves. So they talked with us and shared information, and it was just, it was a lovely, a lovely time. And we are also thrilled that we were able to increase student engagement and inclusion. So that was really awesome. Also, during Spirit Week, Media Club hosted the Monster Mash Dance in the Student Commons, where students were able to socialize, play games, and dance. That was a great event. We had that in the Student Commons lobby, and we found that was an absolutely amazing space. It provided enough room for activities, games, and dancing, and I just wanted to say thank you so much for that because having these spaces is very much appreciated. We just love the Student Commons building. We are so thankful to have spaces for like that for our students because these spaces are what allow us to have these wonderful events. So we just thank you so much for that. Additionally, in partnership with Markham, CAP hosted our Trick or Treat event here in the Welcome Center on Halloween, October 31st. This community event was extremely popular. We had over 1,000 attendees, and it was so popular, in fact, that we ended up running out of candy. And we also, we did hear that the space was a little cramped, so we're rethinking the future of the Trick or Treat event. However, we received tons of great feedback from the community. They love these types of events. They make them feel welcome, and they make the community want to attend Ames because of all the amazing things we're able to accomplish. So that is awesome. And then this month, we also have some very exciting events planned. Tomorrow, on the Fort Leptin campus, our representative will be hosting the Pie and Cider event. So if you're all around the Fort Leptin campus from 9:00 to 12:00 p.m., stop by for some pie and cider. And if you can't make it to Fort Leptin, there will be another exciting event happening tomorrow on the Greeley Campus. It is actually the First Gen Celebration. So this will be held in the ballroom, and we're really excited. So if your schedule allows, please join us for food, crafts, and camaraderie. Next week, on November 15th, SGA will be hosting their third town hall of the semester from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. This town hall will feature resources for veterans and their families, and we will also be featuring different activities such as a card-making station. So you're all invited and more than welcome to stop by if your schedule allows it, and we hope to see you all there. And another wonderful event that we're really excited about that's happening this month is the Art of Indigenous People. This event will be held on November 17th from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. in the Welcome Center ballrooms. And so we welcome you all. You're all formally invited. And we welcome you all to learn and celebrate the beautiful culture of indigenous people with storyteller, singer-songwriter, and author Red Feather Woman and her group. That event, or sorry, that event is open to the community, so please invite all of your friends and family. We're very excited about it. Also, this week is very exciting for myself. As previously I mentioned that I would be traveling to Washington, D.C. to attend the Collegiate Recovery Leadership Academy. I will be leaving this Friday. So I am very excited to, upon my return, to share the information that I've learned with you all. And now, as time would allow, I would continue on and on about our wonderful student leaders and the events that we have planned. But unfortunately, I only have a little bit of time. So with that great note, does anybody have any questions?
Questions of Danielle?
Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Just so appreciate that enthusiasm. Thank you. Next, Julia Weingart, Ames Faculty Association. Welcome, Julia.
Thank you all so much. Good afternoon, Chair Oxziger, Dr. Bornstein, Dr. Rothmer, members of the board, faculty, friends, and colleagues. It is a pleasure to be here speaking in front of you all this afternoon. Now, our faculty are quite thankful and grateful for providing outstanding service to our students and our community. And tis the season to be even a little bit more grateful and thankful, wouldn't you agree? I want to personally thank everyone for allowing me to speak here today and to tell you about our amazing faculty and their wonderful accomplishments here on November the 9th. So let's start off with conferences. Jill Scott, our part-time instructor of Anthropology and Social Sciences, attended an anthropology conference in Estes Park, Colorado, on October 15th of this year. Now Jill attended the inaugural meeting of the Rocky Mountain Biological Anthropology Association. It's called RMBAA for short, R-M-B-A-A, not Rumba, folks, Roomba, okay? Now Jill serves on the Roomba Executive Committee as the Communications Coordinator, and as such, she has served as the organizer for this conference. Roomba is a non-profit, 501(c)(3) student-focused organization with the purpose of advancing science of biological anthropology in the Rocky Mountain region of the United States. Jill, we thank you, and we are truly grateful for you. Next, we have Laura Brashears, who is our part-time instructor of English and Literature, and she attended the Northern Colorado Writers Conference in the spring of 2022. I imagine Laura had a lot of interesting information to bring back to her colleagues and students. Laura, we thank you, and we are truly grateful for you. Let's move on now to our training and our professional development. Francie Rotoni, Associate Professor of Psychology, provided her Psychology of Death and Dying class with the special honor and privilege of being joined by a special guest speaker. Chief Deputy Coroner Joey Weiner from the Weld County Coroner's Office visited the class to speak directly to this group of students about her occupation, the role she played in the community, and the variety of interesting aspects of death that certainly or simply couldn't have been learned anywhere else. Now, many students shared how unique and interesting this experience was. They even said this was, quote, "once in a lifetime opportunity" "to learn more about the important role and service for our community." So thank you, Francie. We are truly grateful for you. Next, we have Eden Welker, and she is our part-time instructor of Behavioral Sciences. She completed an authorized driver course to take her anthropology archaeological students to a local archaeological site, a 2,800-year-old Kaplan-Hoover bison bone bed in Windsor, Colorado during the class time. Now, this was a solution to show students ancient human history in their very own community after she had realized that several of them relied on public transportation or rides from others, and they could not attend the earlier option weekend field trip offering. Giving our students a chance to experience a sense of place and deep local history is a valuable part of the social sciences. So thank you, Eden, and we are truly grateful for you. Let's move on now to community involvement, where once again, we have Laura Brashears, part-time instructor of literature and English, created a writing critique group. Now she created and moderates a writing critique group where local writers can learn about writing and share their work for feedback and growth. I myself am an upcoming author, and I am going to get in touch with Laura to see how I can get involved in this project. So extra thanks to you, Laura. We're truly grateful for you. We're going to end our report on the Ripple nominations, and the first one is going to be nominated by Natalie Delgado, Students Service Specialist, to the fabulous Fort Leptin team. Now, she said that I am so thankful for the Fort Leptin team that got me through a difficult time with grace, encouragement, and support. The Fort Leptin campus did not skip a beat because of the staff's dedication to the students and the willingness to be there for each other in a time of need, and we all know how important that is. This is why I love being a part of this campus and Ames. A huge heartfelt thank you and shout-out to the Ames-Fort Leptin team. Each of you are amazing. So we are so grateful and thankful for you, Fort Leptin team. Finally, my last ripple is Momita Roy, Professor of Economics, nominated by Becca Herman, Director of Student Change Leadership. She would like to ripple Momita on her participation in the MAPS program. She said that I want to thank Momita for her openness to learning and for going on that learning journey with me. Her clear and kind communication with the students, the patience and positivity she brings to every case that she works on. Thank you all so much for allowing me to share this space with you today. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you so much. Thank you, and I wish you all a wonderful, warm holiday season, and I hope you guys have a great, everyone has a great Thanksgiving.
Well, thank you, Julia, for the wonderful report, passionate report. Thank you very, very much. Very well done. Okay, next is action items. First action item. Action item A is the A-R-P-A Grant Letter of Support for Northern Colorado Regional Airport for their grant. And I'd like to introduce Ames Director of Aviation, Eric Hemler. Welcome, Eric.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for having me here again. My name, as Chair Oxziger just said, is Eric Hemler. I'm the Director of Aviation here at Ames, and I'm glad to be here. I have to say, everyone's commented on the tie, so being a 20-year Marine Corps aviator and retired Marine, Marine Corps birthday is tomorrow, so I figured the flag would be a good tie to wear today, so that's why you see that. And of course, Veterans Day is on Friday, so thanks to all of those who have served, certainly in this room and everywhere else. So with that, thanks for allowing me to speak to y'all today. Action Item 7A, titled Northern Colorado Regional Airport Letter of Support. So specifically, this is to provide a letter of support from the Ames Board of Trustees to Northern Colorado Regional Airport via the Airport Director, Jason Lacone, for the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, ARPA, as it relates to supplementary funding for the airport terminal. Now, as you may recall, or as we have discussed last week, the airport has clearly shown its commitment to supporting and promoting all facets of general aviation and commercial aviation to meet the current and future demands of the traveling public and to ultimately become a vibrant regional transportation center. There is no direct fiscal impact to Ames for this. However, there is a great funding opportunity tied to ARPA, as we know, for the airport terminal project that will impact Northern Colorado Regional Airport and the Northern Colorado region. State of recommendation is to approve the letter of support, and I'm certainly here to answer any of your questions.
Are there any questions of Eric? No questions? I think it's important that we read the letter, since that's what we're going to be approving today. And I think it's important that everybody here at Ames is cognizant of the context of this letter, so. If you'll bear with me, I will read this letter to you. October 28th, 2022, Dr. Leah Bornstein, CEO, President, Ames Community College, Subject Letter of Support, Financial Investment to Create an Educational Facility at Northern Colorado Regional Airport. Did I get the wrong one? I apologize. There's two letters here with the same heading. I want to make sure I get the right one. Okay, again, my apologies. October 25th, 2022, Jason Lacone, Airport Director, Northern Colorado Regional Airport, Loveland, Colorado. Subject Letter of Support, the Northern Colorado Regional Airport Grant Application to Support Supplementary Funding for the New Airport Terminal Project. In 1968, one year after Ames Community College was founded, the college created an aviation program which continues to flourish today. The Ames Aviation Program provides education and training for highly technical and highly skilled careers, such as pilots, air traffic controllers, unmanned aircraft system operators, and potentially aircraft maintainers. As currently exists in nearly all sectors of the aviation industry, there is a tremendous shortage of qualified personnel. The Federal Aviation Administration has stated the importance of, in a quote, "creating a robust pipeline of skilled and aviation professionals," end quote. And that includes, quote, "making educational programs available." It's 2019, Northern Colorado Regional Airport. It's been the home of the Ames Flight Training Center, where student demand and enrollment has never been higher. The airport has clearly shown its commitment to supporting and promoting all facets of general aviation and commercial aviation to meet the current and future demands of the traveling public and ultimately become a vibrant regional transportation center. Located in the heart of Northern Colorado and one of only 14 commercial airports in the state of Colorado, Northern Colorado Regional Airport not only serves as an important transportation role for the Northern Colorado region, but it is a critical component to the state's multimodal transportation system. Northern Colorado is becoming one of the fastest-growing regions in Colorado. According to DOLA, which is the Department of Local Affairs, population in Laramie and Weld Counties is forecast to increase by 92% from 2015 to 2045. from 2015 to 2045, meeting the forecast statewide population growth of 53%. As an aviation educational partner with FNL, Ames Community College offers its highest level of support for FNL's, and that's again, Northern Colorado Regional Airport, for their application for a grant that would provide supplemental funding for the new airport terminal project, which will best serve a rapidly growing Northern Colorado region. I appreciate your consideration of this support as you review grant applications. If you have any questions or need additional information, please contact me at 970-339-6211, on behalf of the Ames Board of Trustees, Chair Lyle Oxiger. That's the letter that we will be acting on. Are there any questions or any comments? Okay, do I have a motion to approve Action Item A, the ARPA Grant Letter of Support for Northern Colorado Regional Airport Grant?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve Action Item 7A, the Northern Colorado Regional Airport Letter of Support.
Thank you, Jean. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Marilyn. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations. Is Jason here today?
He is not, actually. He couldn't make it today, but I'll let him know.
Okay, that would be awesome. Okay. Next is Action Item B, an ARPA Grant Letter of Support Ames Grant. Again, Eric Himmler, Director of Aviation.
Again, another quick story, because stories are fun. So, right before I walked over here, I was supposed to drive. I was at the office, and someone walked in, no kidding. I was walking out, and I locked my keys in my office. I grabbed this, though, but I didn't grab my car keys. So anyways, and the student says, so I'm interested in transferring, and I talked to one of the advisors, and they said to come talk here about programs we have. This is no kidding, just happened right before I walked over here. And they're in our pilot programs, and said, "I'm looking for to become an aircraft mechanic." Well, funny enough, I'm going to go and talk a little bit about that today. So anyways, true story. I thought it was worth sharing. Anyways, so with that, Item 7B, Action Item 7B, titled Aircraft Maintenance Technician School Letter of Support. So specifically, this is a letter from Dr. Bornstein to the board asking to provide financial support for the creation of a new Ames Community College Educational Facility, the Northern Colorado Regional Airport, to house the Ames Aircraft Maintenance Technician School if Ames is awarded the ARPA grant funds. So as we had previously discussed, the creation of an Aircraft Maintenance Technician School, or AMTS, at Northern Colorado Regional Airport would allow Ames the ability to offer another aviation program to help address workforce needs in Colorado. These programs represent the opportunity for graduates to seek high-paying jobs that are in very high demand. The ARPA funding will support the construction of roughly a 33,900-square-foot facility, which includes classrooms, hangar spaces, aircraft, and associated equipment. This will impact Ames if or when Ames applies for this. For this funding, which would be $24 million, is a 25% match or a $6 million obligation. State of recommendation is to approve the 25% match, or $6 million, needed for the successful implementation of the ARPA grant via the Letter of Support. And while, I'm not sure if you want to read that letter as well, and if not, I certainly can also.
Trustee Wendell has offered to read it, so I'm going to let her do that. Okay, so, Trustee Wendell?
October 28, 2022, Dr. Leah Bornstein, regarding Letter of Support Financial Investment to Create an Educational Facility at Northern Colorado Regional Airport to House the Ames Aircraft Maintenance Technician School. In North America, over the next 20 years, 133,000 aircraft mechanics will be needed. The creation of an Aircraft Maintenance Technician School, AMTS, at Northern Colorado Regional Airport, NOCO, Northern Colorado, would allow Ames Community College to offer the Airframe and Power Plant, AMP, program to help address the workforce needs in Colorado. The AMTS is an educational facility certificated, is that? Certificated, right?
That's close.
By the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, to train prospective aircraft mechanics for careers in the airline industry, in aviation maintenance facilities, and in commercial and general aviation. These programs represent the opportunity for graduates to seek high-paying jobs that are in demand across the country and in Colorado. According to the FAA, there are currently only three certified certificated AMTs in the state of Colorado, which include Cherry Creek Innovation Campus High School Program, Cherry Creek, Northwestern Community Range, or College in Rangeley, Colorado, and Spartan College of Aeronautics and Technology, Broomfield. The current training options in Colorado leave potential students with limited AMTS options. With its proven track record in aviation education, Ames is ideally positioned to support the rapid growth in Northern Colorado by offering an aircraft mechanic associate of applied science degree, AAS degree, academic certificates, and FAA AMP certification. Ames will apply for a $24 million workforce development grant as part of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, of 2021. It is expected that this grant will require a 25% funding match, up to $6 million, to be provided by Ames. These monies will fund the 33,900-square-foot facility that will house the classroom, hangar spaces, aircraft, and equipment necessary for this program. If Ames is awarded the ARPA grant, the Ames Board of Trustees financially supports the creation of an AMTS and all of the possibilities it will bring. If you have any questions or in need of additional information, please contact me at 970-339-6211, on behalf of the Ames Board of Trustees, Chair Lyle Oxiger.
Thank you, Heidi. I appreciate that. Any questions on that letter? Comments? Hearing none. Mark?
Just real proud of this opportunity to move forward, and it's a combination between Weld and Larimer Counties, as well as our rest of our communities. And I hope our location that we choose over there eventually is suits the best parameters of the need too as well, because I think that's one of the next steps coming down the pike.
It is, and I think we have a lot of good potential locations. It's exciting, so thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none? Do I have a motion to approve Action Item B, the ARPA Grant Letter of Support for Ames Grant?
I so move to approve the Action Item Number 7C.
I have a motion and a second. 7B.
7B.
Okay. And Jean, you seconded the motion for Action Item 7B, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion? I just want to echo that this is an incredible opportunity for Ames and probably one that will not come along again in a long, long while. Certainly meets what we have talked about and what we have included in our strategic plan. It's very fortuitous that toward the end of our strategic plan that this becomes available, this opportunity becomes available. So, I will definitely be supporting this. Anything else? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. And motion carries. Congratulations. Exciting stuff at Ames Community College. Next on the action items is Action Item 7C, Code of Conduct and Code of Ethics Procedure 16-01. Trustees developed the attached procedure with consultation from Attorney Jennifer O'Neill. Discussion and deliberation during the June 22, 2022 Board Retreat and the October 12, 2022 Board Meeting. Attached to this item is the current procedure, 16-01, Code of Ethics, and the draft procedure, 16-01, Code of Conduct and Code of Ethics. The draft procedure, if approved, will replace the current procedure. So what we're discussing today and looking for approval on is the approval of the draft procedure as documented in your packet. I'm hoping you all had plenty of time to review this carefully. We'll open it up for discussion. Is there any discussion? Heidi?
The only thing I'd like to say is just how it's printed on the on the page. It looks like it's copied.
On the draft?
On the draft, yeah. It's not a big deal.
Well, I think what we can do is we'll reformat. You know, yeah, I see it on the second page, but we'll reformat.
Okay. Anybody else? Mark, you look like you have a question.
Oh, just a little bit back to our conversation on fines. Have we figured out a way to define fines?
Oh, I have not defined fines based upon your direction as a board in the prior conversations to allow for you to decide at the time that you would want to implement any fines based upon the situation at hand.
Marilyn?
Knowing I wasn't here last month and much of the discussion and trying to get caught up, as I was reading through this, I'm not familiar with fines coming into the Code of Conducts and the ethics. So, is this a common practice to implement fines in the practices?
So, for community colleges, I would say no. For public corporations, you know, other types of businesses, yes. I would say where it's more common is not necessarily in the drafting, but when things rise to the level where they need to make an impact, then it's often like a one-off, like resolution that boards will determine at the time, rather than it being an option already predefined within your purview.
Yeah, and I think that's what I'm used to seeing. And so, I was, I guess, a little surprised that we would include it in this document for the Code of Ethics and Code of Conduct. And again, knowing I wasn't here last month with that discussion, but that was me being, my familiarity around fines particularly on boards.
Yeah, and the way that this is drafted, if you'll recall from our conversation in June, what we discussed at a very high level, and to be clear, it doesn't have to be included, but because there is also the language of any other reasonable consequence after discussing with legal counsel, you can also recommend at any time as a board, if something comes up, to try and implement other things. But the idea here was to give you kind of a litany list of things that you could, as a board, whether the current board or future board members, to have ideas around, okay, we've had this issue come up. We have continued to behave in a way that is in violation of our Code of Ethics and Code of Conduct, and what are our remedies? And what can we, as a board, vote upon in order to try and deter that type of behavior? That was the idea that we had discussed in June. So therefore, this is a listing of those things, none of which could be employed without you all voting as a majority based upon the situation with whatever the subject trustees' behavior was.
Anyone else?
I guess I'm just kind of confused on how that could get defined. And if we reached that point, how far down the rabbit hole did we actually go? And is that going to solve the problem? Or is that going to actually exacerbate it? I would be concerned about it. Is there any other community colleges that those drew this?
I can't say that I've read it in one single community college, but on the ones that I've reviewed, no, it isn't. We talked a little bit in the October meeting. There are things that have been playing out in the public spaces with board actions, executive actions, et cetera, that there are more things coming to light where these types of but in actual documentation, most of the documentation is relatively standard, just like yours has been in the past. And so, I haven't seen in the limited research that I've done on the other, you know, just reviewing other programs, a lot of them that have made significant changes in the last few years. You will start to see that because of some of the things that are playing out, unfortunately. But currently, you know, we all know documentation tends to be the last thing changed.
We've been working on this for close to a year now, am I correct?
On the procedure?
Yeah, on just Code of Ethics and management and this type of effect.
Yeah, so we started out in January, right, with the higher objective of looking at the Code of Conduct, code of, you know, basically behaviors around, how should the Board of Trustees be behaving? What policies do they need to follow, all of that? And so, first, we worked on the Code of Ethics and the Code of Conduct. And then, once those were completed and you guys approved those, we decided to move forward with looking at the procedures associated with if there is a violation of those, what is the guidance to you as a board from a documentation standpoint within your own power through the procedures as to what you do?
Okay. You know, in an ideal world, we hope we could solve it with the first paragraph or two.
Yeah, or not even get to that point.
And not have to travel down and through that because we take that to page two and three. Because this is the most I believe we've had more legal advice presentations, which are great. I really like, you know, you're shooting for trying to cover as many holes in the fence as possible. Driving tool. In time, we could always vote on that later. It's just an adjustment. We can add this kind of, unless it was in the terms.
To be clear, on any of these, you would go to take action as a board with any of these, right? This is literally, if the way you read it is a list of your, like, potential options, but in the event one of you steps outside the lines and continues to step outside the lines, then you, in your self-regulating authority, would look at this and say, okay, based upon what they've done, what do we want to do in order to reprimand them? Do we want to reprimand them? You would vote upon that, right? In general, similar to what we walked through as to kind of like steps on scenarios, most likely, you would do some type of private reprimand first.
Well, yeah, no, I understand.
Like, so these, again, the fines would only be defined based upon you as a board saying, I want to look at this. We've tried everything else. I I want to look at this. We've tried everything else. I want to look at this. And again, whether it's in root here or not listed in this way, it doesn't mean it's not an option for you. This is just to give you a listing of, here's kind of our steps that we've discussed that we might want to employ based upon the situation at hand.
This is more of a corporate point, if you're not correct. Business world rather than an elected official or
Well, it's, so it's more along the lines. Let me give you an example. So and this goes back to our conversations in June when we talked about this pretty heavily, right? Is let's say, I mean, one of the things that you should not do and is in your Code of Conduct and Code of Ethics is self-dealing. Okay, let's say you enter into a self-dealing exercise where you make a bunch of money off of it. Okay, you as a board might say, okay, we've told you about this. You knew not to do it. We you know, advised clearly. You didn't disclose it. We didn't approve it. You have made, I'm making stuff up, hundred thousand dollars off of this. Therefore, we're going to fine you and you're going to pay half of that back to the college because we didn't know that you were driving this forward because it was a self-dealing action. That's the type of scenario I would see you potentially utilizing this in.
Case law to support that?
Yes. There's case law around self-governing boards in any scenario, regulate themselves and based upon majority of vote, approve what the actions can be taken against one another.
No, it may very well be that another community college down the road may look and say, does any other college look at that? And they'll say, well, yeah, Ames College does. So, you know, maybe we're we're more forward thinking. I hope that we would never get to that point. I would hope that, and I'm assuming that the boards, based on history and based on current boards are mature, adult, responsible people. And and we do take care of ourselves. Well, I would assume that we would never get to the point where we would decide we're going to find somebody unless there's some way somebody came up with a scheme to get money off of Ames or something and we decided to use that. But your one question mark about whether it might just exacerbate things, I would think that if we got to a point as a board where we got to finding people, whatever that behavior is that got us to that point would probably, in my estimation, be a whole lot more exacerbating than a fine. I mean, that sounds pretty desperate to me, but it's an option in case there would ever be a situation where we didn't have any other options and we needed something else. So it's not a requirement. It's not a suggestion. It's just very simply an option put out there. And the amounts, I think, then would be, as what I get out of this, defined by the board at that time, depending on the extent of the bad behavior and how much would be warranted or what kind of quote unquote sanctions or whatever you want to call it would be applied. You try to remedy the bad behavior.
Yeah, at the end of the day, we talked about this last month. Sorry, Marilyn, you weren't here, but the the point of all of this is ultimately, I mean, you guys are are unique, right? Because you're quasi-public, quasi-private. And so because of that, you guys have some protections that most boards do not. Um, because you are elected, right? So whereas in other colleges, they don't have that same thing. So if the board determines like we want you off, then they just kick you off, right? So but in this, if you ultimately are spending a lot of time on this procedure, you've got a lot bigger issues than the fact that fines is listed in this procedure. Um, and that's what I would tell you. As we've all talked about, you don't need a lawyer till you need one. And you don't need the procedures until you need one.
I I would just say, um, I'm looking at it. It's probably, I don't even think that's the worst case scenario. I think the worst case scenario is to be publicly reprimanded.
Yeah.
At a board meeting, that's more, that's, that's worst, you know, so. But I think it's an option, not hopefully it's never ever needed, correct?
Marilyn.
And I think my question is that is I just haven't seen it laid out because I think there's numerous um, ways to continue to deal with it and whether you put a resolution or some of the other legal words that um, in order to be able to move into a direction of what needs to happen in order to remedy the situation or to get resolution behind that. And so that was, that's where I came from with just more of a question of this is an option, but there's other options too.
That's correct.
Even outside of this, so.
Absolutely.
Um, I think the question for me is, do we keep that in there as one of those options? Do you take that out knowing, especially around the discussion, what your options are? And I'm not hung up on it either way. I've just never seen it in your Code of Conduct or Code of Ethics. And so, um, yeah, that's why I I had more of the question around it.
Yeah, and it would only ever be in like a procedure where you're listing out, like, here's some of the things that you could do.
Yeah, and that, and I guess that outside of corporate America, that's kind of where I see it. And so, um, is it the appropriate place for it in here or is that piece not in there is the question that I would have. And again, I can go either way, so.
Yeah, I would tell you what you most commonly see, right, is a very broad statement of any and all remedies that the board determines. So the 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 only and primary reason any of these are listed out is based upon the direction that we discussed in June of, well, we want to give some options in here so that we at least we or the future board members are at least like, oh, let's consider this. Let's talk about this. Does that make sense? Does it not make sense? Because there was questions around what can we do, what can't we do? What's more commonly done, those types of things? As well as, okay, in our situation, what would potentially curtail people of different mindsets from that type of behavior?
I think it's an awareness. Again, I have no problem either way.
Trustee O'Hara, you've been waiting. Thank you.
I would like clarification on number two disciplinary action two A, uh, where it states, uh, where the procedure under section one above fails to resolve the matter or where because of the serious nature of the alleged behavior, the procedure is deemed to be inappropriate or inadequate, the board chair slash college president shall have the following remedies available to them. What does a board chair slash college president mean? Is that board chair and or college president or it just says board chair slash?
Either or. It's based upon who you feel comfortable going to with the allegations.
So that would imply that the college president uh, can implement or
No, she can then walk through the procedure, the college president or the chair. If they are reported an allegation, then they can then walk through the procedures. And if the board up above, you have to go back to the above, says that there is a violation, this person has behaved inappropriately and against the Code of Conduct or Code of Ethics, and you as a board have a majority vote on that and agree to that, then you come down to the disciplinary actions and it goes through. So the first is that every year you can, you do not have to, but you can vote in advance of what the disciplinary actions are allowed without an additional vote in regards to the actions. Or to follow down through, and it says if those are not adequately defined, right, then you have another vote by the full board. So either the chair or or president or in some situations, the secretary, which is also another provision in here, would bring to the full board and say, you've approved, you know, normally it'd be discussed at the same time as the action. And say, based upon this action, here's what I'm recommending for the disciplinary action. Do you approve of that action? In no scenario is it done without the board having already approved by a majority that these are the actions to be taken in specific situations.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that makes all sense.
Okay. I have a question.
The problem with when you get so many words on a page. Words on a page and you refer to two places.
One D. Excuse me, um, they've got the mics hooked into the system, so we don't have to do that.
Oh, we don't have to?
No.
Can you hear me, Mark?
No, and we'll be having words with you after the meeting.
It 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 becomes more convoluted. This this statement is, you know, it's a moving part altogether. Um, other policies, procedure, Colorado Mountain College, I've looked at, it's it's a page. You know, and it basically, it's done. And it's, it's got the first meat and potatoes, the public censure and all the things that you do privately and all those things. I I just, you know, feel that, you know, we've invested a huge sum of money on this, you know, your time's valuable to us all and we appreciate your input because you've given us guidance on variety of topics, other last last May and down in Fort Lepton, or March was it? Um, I think you gave us guidance on on some of our questions. And then, uh, it's just, it it's very convoluted and I think it could be simplified. But I don't know if you can reduce it by a page on your terms. So I'm, I'm kind of uncomfortable with it, but I'm I'm part of this board, you know, and I don't feel comfortable with fines. I've made that point. Um, I don't think it's a necessary thing. We can always change our minds pretty much at the whim of the board uh, in that direction. So I I would feel more comfortable going ahead with this without that statement, but kind of like Marilyn to some extent, I just wise it there and have more thumbs up in this thing, shake a stick. Uh, not that they're not necessary. I'm just saying, there's plenty there. It's like, this is a Magna Carta in a in a fact.
Yeah, I mean.
Or discipline.
The gist of this is I I have given you my advice. We've had many conversations around it. It is your procedure.
I know.
You get to decide what it looks like and what it doesn't look like. Your prior procedure, the direction I was given was, we want direction, not too much direction, but not too little direction. So this is the in-between. So, um, so ultimately it's up to you.
Thank you.
So I have one more question. What if I'm the bad guy? What if the chair is the bad guy? Who then presides over this procedure? Does it go to the, I would assume, the secretary or vice chair?
Correct. There's a specific sentence in here that says if it involves the chair.
Okay.
That it goes to the secretary.
Thank you for that. All right. Any other questions, comments?
By the way, that's also why it allows them to go to the chair or the president. Because if it involves you, the first course of action is to get somebody outside of the chair involved in that.
Okay. I have a motion to approve action item seven C Code of Conduct and Code of Ethics Procedure sixteen dash oh one.
I would make a motion to approve it and eliminate fine.
Do we need to revise? No, I think it's perfectly legal, isn't it? Okay. Yeah, we just need a second to that. Okay, second call. We need a second. Okay, the motion dies for lack of a second. Do we have a motion to approve action item seven C Code of Conduct and Code of Ethics Procedure sixteen dash oh one?
I move that we approve the action item number seven C.
Wait a second.
A second.
We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Did everybody vote?
Yep.
Assume so. Okay, that motion passes. Thank you very much. On the agenda. Action item D Board of Trustees Meeting and Retreat Dates for two thousand twenty-three. Jerry, you're up.
Chair Oxiger. In your packet, a draft a draft or proposed calendar of your retreat and meeting dates for two thousand twenty-three. Um, it was discussed at the October work session, just to kind of give everybody the time to give you guys a month to kind of look at your calendars and make sure all these dates worked. Um, so as as you can see in your packets, uh, the retreat for January is tentatively scheduled for, um, January nineteenth. And then we have board meetings for February eighth, March first, April twelfth, May third. And then, uh, June sixth and seventh would be the summer retreat, no meetings in July. Then August ninth, September thirteenth, October eleventh, November eighth, and December the thirteenth. Those would be the proposed dates, uh, based on discussions, um, in October.
Questions on those dates? Marilyn?
I don't have a question on date, but just on notification and dates. If something were to come up, um, because I don't know that policy. Um, and we need to change it particularly for a notification of when the date, when the um, meeting would be moved to. Can you just explain that so I know? I I'm fine with the dates, but.
Yeah, so, um, it wouldn't need to be necessarily a formal action. So this is something that actually occurred last, um, last October. It was originally set for a certain date and then things came up, so we had to push it by a week. Um, so that would be something that we would post to the public, of course, to let the public be aware. Um, in our public posting place, which is on the board's website, we would just post that notice there that the board meeting date has changed. And if it changed location even and not the date, we would post that to the public. But, um, there wouldn't need to be action necessarily from the board the month before to to make that a formal action. It could just be decided and then we would post it.
Great, thank you.
Heidi.
I just had a comment. I appreciate you looking at the uh, board retreat being early in June versus towards the end. I like that. Thank you.
Just for your information, uh, the December meeting is set, so it includes the the certification of the Mill Levy. So that that date has been done in consideration of that, so. So we're good to go. Oh, do we need a motion to approve that, Jerry?
Yes.
If there's no further discussion, then do I have a motion to approve action item seventy?
Motion to approve action item seventy.
We have a second. Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, our dates are set. Thank you very much. That motion passes. Okay, next, um, under information items. Action item or item eight. First one is the events calendar and upcoming work session agenda items. And Jerry, our board days on, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair Oxiger. Uh, you'll find in your packets, uh, first for this item, the upcoming events calendar um, for tomorrow. I've got the foundation board meeting, uh, down at the Fort Lepton campus, nine to ten thirty. Uh, so far, as you can see there, we have trustee Hoult and Wendell, um, that have signified that they would be attending that. Um, on November the eighteenth is the give back day at the Weld Food Bank and trustee Wendell, uh, will be attending that. Um, of course, listed here commencement, uh, hopefully you all have that marked on your calendars already and plan on being there. For ninth, and the ceremony will start at five P M. Um, and we'll, discussion as we get a little bit closer on specifics of when you should arrive and and all of that. Of course, December fourteenth will be the next board meeting and it will be here in this room. And, uh, January nineteenth is our board retreat. And then Conversation Day as well, uh, February seventeenth, which we'd like all of you to attend to. Is looking ahead to, uh, the December meeting and taking a look at the different items that will be coming up. Um, as Chuck mentioned earlier, there'll be a work session over tuition and fees. There'll also be an update from the foundation, uh, board trustee liaison. Um, and then certification of the property tax valuation and some sabbatical requests and a few reports on course and lab fees, um, and then a legislative pre-session, um, report. You'll also notice in August, uh, there's a highlighted item there. This item is being added, um, to the annual calendars going forward for, um, an annual update on high school programs, just a report on high school programs. This is information that the board receives, um, throughout the year anyway, um, but it was thought that it Um, but it was thought that it would be better just to formalize this and and say every August, you know, you all will get that information all at once. Uh, instead of spread out throughout the year.
No questions? Mark?
Is this this December as far as I'd be assumption? We elect officers?
No, those are, those are as needed. So during election years, after we onboard them. Yep, yep, so not not this year.
Don't want to go down that road.
Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate it. Next, uh A B A C C T Annual Conference Debrief. Fortunately, Jerry and I were unable to make it. Apologize, we missed out, I know. And uh, so um trustees Hoult and Wendell. Um, and trustee O'Hara, I think, made it to New York for the conference. Dr. Bornstein was there. So uh, I thought we'd do a quick debrief and you can tell us about your trip. Share with us the highlights. We don't want to hear the lowlights. Who wants to go first? Thank you, Heidi.
It was wonderful conference. I enjoyed it. New York City was fun. I met a lot of nice, really nice people. Um, a couple women I spent quite a bit of time with. Um, first day, um, I went to a three-hour conference, uh what trustees need to know about advocacy, which I really liked. I mean, that was probably the best session. Well, not the best, but one of the top sessions. Um, I learned how uh that I need to develop an elevator pitch, something personal, a personal um story that I can relate to a council. Councilman, councilwoman, someone to impress upon them our needs um for students and our community. So I need to work on that. So that was. It was great. I'm kind of interested in the Washington D C conference because of that. Um, I went to a few sessions on diversity and equity and inclusion. Which is really important to me. Um, they were wonderful and talked about this franchise minority groups. And some that people don't think about, and that's formerly incarcerated um people, foster youth. Um, DACA, of course, or DACA kids, and then male students, you know, um with COVID and so forth, male students have. Their enrollment has dropped. Um, so that was really interesting, kind of an eye-opening for me. Um. Let's see, there's a lot, there was a lot of programs for billing for the first year of success. Um, so if they're saying if you can get those students through their first year successfully, they're more likely to complete um their second year and continue on. So there was a couple um sessions I went to on that, and then um, like to point out two things. Um, this this one session um took place the same exact time as Dr. Bornstein's session. And I was, I went to hers just for a little bit, but I went to this other one, and it was a journalist teacher who. Um, started saying most journalists tell the the story of the other people. And she was teaching her students to tell their own story and tell it to the newspaper and so forth. And they had some really amazing um writing samples. But one student did a video report, and so it was very visual, of course. And primarily, he was a trimmed hair, and he and another student went out to the community and. Um, cut hair for the homeless. And needless to say, it, you know, wasn't just a video report. It became something, you know, a video of humanity compassion, and it was pretty passionate. I had a few tears in my eyes, but it was very well done and um shows the importance of students, no matter what they're doing in the public eye. The last one um was a um conference. About Maricopa County in Arizona. And this, I I went in thinking I wasn't gonna learn anything, or it was amazing. They have worked with an artificial intelligence company down there that needed workforce. They just couldn't get the workforce. So they developed a program that was over a year and a half. They put out this program. It's a two-week program. Costs two hundred and thirty-eight dollars an hour, and it's, I don't know how many credit hours, not many. And after they go through this two-week program, they can earn up to seventy thousand to a hundred and ten thousand dollars with this company. Down in Maricopa County. And I asked if my son is from Colorado. They said, sure, but there is a huge waiting list, and they can only have twelve students on each campus. There's three campuses, so it's thirty-six students every two weeks that can go through this program, and they need like four thousand. Um, people. So it just shows the emphasis, how important it is for community colleges to work with. The workforce here to develop, and so I'm pretty proud of what we're doing with our nursing and the airport and mechanics. So, but a great conference overall, and I was able to see the Lion King, so thank you.
It it's, it it's always interesting and very informative to go to the national conferences like that and have a chance to. Speak with other trustees and hear what's happening there. Uh, I would say in general, what I learn when I go there is Ames Community College is pretty cutting-edge. Uh, when they're talking about new programs and so forth, uh generally, we have them underway. Or we've considered them, decided that timing wasn't right or whatever. But uh, to just uh, in 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 general. I I walk away from those conferences feeling really good about what's happening at Ames. And where we are, and our problems are pretty minor compared to most of the other community colleges. And especially as it relates to the financials. Yeah, in in our campus, the way it looks, our uh faculty, that we're very fortunate.
I echoed Jean. I mean, one thing, you you almost have to be kind of. List, a listener rather than a bragger. When you go to these events and you hear the concerns of other colleges financially. And just how they're hamstrung with uh having to get bond issues, do things that are, we don't realize how fortunate we are at times. And we, I think we do realize it. It's just what's the best practice is what we can do moving forward. So those are some of the conversations you hear on the, you know, af- after some of the sessions or during the sessions. I did hear that. I was in the back of the room. Uh, Heidi and I were in the same. Same uh, we picked the same topics. We're kind of similar. The marginalized, and you know, when you think about the most marginalized individuals, you know, they're in every community. You know, they're walking on the street pushing grocery carts. There's a lot of things going on in that respect. But you're incarcerated, just coming out of jail are really the most marginalized. They they don't have a driver's license. They don't have rent. They, you're stuck being in a homeless shelter. And that's that's frustrating. I mean, because we have a huge system of incarceration, you know. You you wonder if there's a way that they could figure out. Instead of keeping them for an extra three months, they take that money and. Let's get them on their feet. Let's give them a a driver's license. So, you know, all those things. Those things don't occur typically, which is really sad. When you have your your foster parent uh parenting and foster children, that's a whole nother, those children have been. You know, just run through a wringer of uh dis- uh social disabilities, just in a variety of ways. Um, hunger. One-third of these kids are hungry. We need the programs. Unfortunately, it's there. It's needed. I think we're all aware of that in these in these school districts. Then, that's that. I think Heidi did a good job filling you in. I had another one. It was the community college in Omaha, Nebraska. Built a fifty million dollar, up my alley, skilled trades learning program facility, you know. And they did it with collaboration between industry. Stepping up to the plate, realizing the need, realizing that the uh. Uh, the means to the end begins in middle school or earlier, educating both students and parents about career potentials in a variety of ways. They have onboarded um, their counselors actually come to each school. On a regular basis, maybe Tuesdays and Thursdays, they're there. They're there to support the existing counselors program. And there's a complete buy-in with the school district. And as we've learned more and more so, as you read whatever you read in books. On the challenges higher ed has, and where can heat colleges really dovetail it in well with that. What we're doing. We're not only helping those high school students bother in high school, but what we're doing post-secondary. It's so important, and you guys got to be totally proud of everything that you're doing that way. Because everybody else is in that, is in that realization. Higher is going to change over a period of time. Next ten years, it's going to be a different beast. Um, degree learning is already been supplemented by credential learning. And so we're 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 there. We're already there. Um, what we have to do is start reaching into our students at a younger age. And what our concurrent enrollment program is doing is right up to speed with what's going on that way. I don't know how much we involve ourselves from uh advisement side. That's important. Let me just check my notes. Oh, oh, they do industry sponsorships, half-day work, half-day in class. So their kids are getting paid, going to school. What an awful idea. Um, but there's a huge corporate buy-in. And that's really what's critical. The Hensel Phelps, the the companies that we, our skilled labor force is in such. Dire straits right now. Carpenter, plumbers, electricians, you guys, I know I I listen to me all the time talk about it, but it's real. And that's what this program is taking care of. Um, but they project a clear pathway for students, and they educate the parents. They see if we can educate the parents as well as the student, the parent won't feel so guilty if the kid doesn't want to go to college, you know. Led down that road and, you know, if you didn't go to college, you're gonna be a failure, and that's a sad, non-true. Um. Certificates. Sponsorship. If if there's a need in a high school, we need this. It's run up the flagpole, and all of a sudden, that piece of equipment shows up on their doorstep. It's, there's a real big buy-in, and and we are a wealthy community. We have the right reason. This community. Won't object to any sum of money whatsoever. And and I'm sorry, um, but. The long and short is this community, like other communities, Omaha is a wealthy community. It's a farming community. We have the authority, you know, listen to Chuck's numbers, and I kind of got a preview before. We're so fortunate. In two thousand twenty-four to have the sum of money in the bank. And. It's kind of, I'm sure we can. Thank you. It was a great time. Thank you for saying, this is my last uh A C C T conference, so. It's been a pleasure going to these events, and um I know Marilyn, she missed something, but she had a great adventure. And we also went to Africa because Gina and I went to see the Lion King, and that was. If you ever get a chance, do it. I, you know, Broadway's super, but I think they tour every once in a while, but it was a stupendous trip. And I, we got to hear about Marilyn's, but maybe you can talk about that.
Hey, Mark had a great time, it sounds like. Heidi?
I I want everyone to end on Marilyn, but um I really want to say I did briefly sit in Dr. B's um presentation at the conference. Um, she had a full room. She did very good. She had lots of questions. And I mean, I was there briefly, and she had beautiful photos of the campus. I think everyone was so impressed. To see the photos, the aerial photos of the campus, and then land. I mean, we have a beautiful view here, so, but I think you had a really good turnout.
Awesome. Sorry I bailed on you. Okay, anybody else? Yes.
The only statement I'll make is, you guys saw Lion King in New York. I saw it in life, in real life, so there you go.
Well, as some other time, you'll have to tell us about your trip to Africa. If it were appropriate to the board meeting, we would certainly let you hear, but. Okay, well, thank you for those reports. Appreciate it. I wasn't there, but I do want to say one thing about the conference. Um, you know, sometimes you get the idea about going to these conferences as well, and you pretty much hear the same thing every time you go and year after year. It's kind of the same thing, and uh I wondered about going myself because of that. But having said that, and having thought about it, going to these conferences does something else. It validates what Ames is all about. When we go to these conferences and we hear the stories of other uh colleges across the country. What they're doing, where they're trying to get to, uh how they're trying to get there, how about their finances. Uh, you know, the whole gamut. We're there. We. Uh, we're on the cutting edge, and in a lot of instances, we're, we're eons ahead of. Some of these uh colleges that don't have, aren't fortunate enough to have our resources. And our our, trying to figure out how to get where we're already at. So I come back from those conferences feeling really, really extra special about Ames and what we're doing. And I'm I'm always uh convinced that we're on the right path, we're going the right direction, we're doing things the right way. So um, I just wanted to throw that out and thank everybody that's on board with us and making all of. Everything happen that happens here at Gunnamber, or it looks like. Everything that happens here at Ames, uh, we're doing it right, so it's always good to hear. Okay, that concludes information items. I think that brings up item number nine, the CEO President's Report. Dr. Bornstein, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you. So um, as that has been our practice the last few months, um, we're not going through highlights. But you have highlights in your packet, so if you do have any questions for our cabinet highlights. I'll just pause for a moment and see if you have anything from that. Always, always exciting things happening. Okay, um, so this month, um, per the board topical calendar. Um, is the month for our employee services or formerly named H R annual report and our Cleary report out. Uh, the Cleary numbers have been out actually for about a month. And have been posted certainly on our website, um, but uh D is ready to go, so I won't say anymore. But you also, I think on page fifty-five of your portal book, you'll see um the first page of the employee services annual report. D, take it away.
Thank you. Good afternoon, trustees and Dr. Bornstein. This year's annual report looks slightly different. Starting with page one, highlighting our new department called Employee Services. Which consists of five departments and one notable functional area supported by several of the Employee Services Departments. Most of these departments have been under H R for about seven years. However, an Employee Services Department. Provides a better reflection of the scope of services and support provided for employees across the entire college. Employee Services' primary focus is college strategic initiatives related to the functional areas under Employee Services. Human Resources, of course, supports employee recruiting, compensation, benefits. Federal and state compliance, such as Family and Medical Leave Act, Americans with Disabilities Act, and Workers' Comp. Employee Relations' primary function is to support performance management, development, and coaching. Along with other compliance functions related to employment. Title IX and Compliance Management is new to Employee Services. This area is responsible for compliance in the Title IX arena. And will focus on policy and procedure maintenance and mandatory annual training, working with groups. Within Employee Services and across the college. You're you are very familiar with campus safety and security. You're, you are very familiar with campus safety and security and their role with the college. However, I would like to highlight their role in the environmental health, working with other departments as needed inside and outside of Employee Services. Of course, the most recent environmental health issue we managed was the pandemic. Center for Professional Development has grown to include significant programs under Employee Wellness. We'll talk a bit more about those efforts shortly. The data provided on page two, three, and four is similar to what you have received in the past and is fairly easy to follow. However, I do have a few highlights that I would like to point out. Starting with page two, this data reflects a one-time snapshot allowing us to compare from one year to the next. Last year's employee headcount was just over one thousand and this year's headcount is just over eleven hundred. The counts between full-time and part-time employees hasn't changed significantly, both are up. And when we break those numbers down by the different employee bases, those numbers are up across the board except for full-time faculty and administrator headcounts. There are not any significant changes with gender, age, tenure, and ethnicity numbers. Last year, the talk at the national level was about the Great Resignation, and that hasn't gone away. Ames did and is currently continuing to fill this impact. We did go up in turnover two years ago from just over five percent to twelve percent. And we continue to see a twelve percent turnover rate this past year. Higher ed industry has increased significantly from just under sixteen percent to just under nineteen percent. On page three, you have information regarding our recruiting efforts. This is an area, area where we are still feeling significant effects of the pandemic. Pre-co, whoop, pre-COVID. Pre-COVID. Pre-COVID, nope. Your jury. Okay, try that again. On my place. The COVID. So, pre-COVID, our applicant average pool size for full-time positions was holding at twenty-five to thirty with a range of ten up to ninety applicants per some pools. Our current applicant pool size is down to an average of seven, which is down from last year's average of twelve applicants. Today, we feel very fortunate to have five to ten qualified applicants in our pool. This current environment is making our recruiting efforts very challenging, is much more time-consuming and requires more resources to ensure a successful hire. We will need to continue to focus on strategies to ensure that we are able to recruit top talent, even if our pools remain small. Our strategies will need to include continued review of our compensation, benefits, and the impact of the cost of living. Current predictions are that the typical three to four percent salary increases may not meet the mark with the current employee market. An excerpt from SHRM, Society for HR Management, states, quote, "The Consumer Price Index for all items increased eight point five percent for the twelve months ending in July. A smaller figure than the nine point one percent increase for the period ending in June, but still near a forty-year high. Compensation planners may be relying on estimates that the inflation rate will continue to moderate in 2023. If it doesn't, employers could be pressured to raise their salary budget projections," unquote. Employers are still feeling the effect of the labor market due to the Great Resignation. And according to LinkedIn, quote, "The largest numbers of people leaving the workforce include millions of baby boomers who are taking early retirement and millions of Gen Z'ers," unquote. And ac- and according to other resources, quote, "Many more women than men are quitting, and the number one factor for the continued Great Resignation and people wanting to ta- change jobs in 2022 is pay," unquote. As mentioned earlier during the work session, Gen Z'ers is the fastest-growing population. So this will be an interest, will be interesting on how this impacts the labor market in the future. Just before the pandemic hit, we undertook a significant market analysis to right-size our hiring matrix and salaries with intent to lead the employment market, capitalizing on our primary focus, our employees. However, the past two years has moved us out of the lead in the labor market. As I mentioned earlier, our turnover numbers and small applicant pools reflect this impact. We will need to continue to, continue our focus on our employees. Therefore, I will be providing more details during the March work session on how we will continue to strategize on that focus. On another note, internal moves have increased from, from thirty-two percent to fifty percent. This data reflects employees' desire to continue to develop professionally and stay at Ames. Employee Relations will be implementing, implementing a program utilizing a new product called Culture Amp with the goal to give employees and supervisors tools to focus on continuous professional development and growth, which is crucial to retaining top talent. A few highlights on page four, under Center for Professional Development and Wellness. Professional development attendance is starting to increase. We're experiencing more travel to conferences and in-person training events, which is starting to feel normal again and is a great morale booster. And this continues to be a great recruiting tool for new employees. The Hope Initiative Program is still going strong and was initially designed and implemented to help employees navigate the effects of the pandemic and returning to work. A monthly thematic newsletter is sent out to all employees. Some of the themes include spark your passion, embrace balance, and get moving. A lot of great information about staying well and healthy. Due to the utilization, we plan to institutionalize the Hope Initiative Program, which included the implementation of the Talkspace Program this past year. Employees and their dependents can receive support related to mental health. This program allows participants to connect with dedicated licensed therapists from secure HIPAA-compliant mobile app and web platform. Participants can send their therapists text, voice, or video messages anytime, anywhere. So this program has been well-received since implementation this year. Additional health programs include the annual health, health fair, where over one hundred employees participated in in-person, participated in person to receive flu shots and complete biometrics. And we have had an additional one hundred and sixty-eight employees receive their flu shots at clinics held at each campus. This was accomplished by partnering with our local healthcare providers. The final page of your report covers support services by campus safety and security and the changes we have made in this department. Their services are continuing to expand as the needs of our community changes. As I mentioned earlier, they not only support and monitor environmental health issues that, that, that may impact the Ames community, they provide traditional safety and security services such as escort services. They have an established alert notification system under the Rave Program and provide immediate response to concerns that are reported. These services are provided for employees, students, and visitors. These efforts are possible due to the networking efforts with our local PD departments, health departments, state and federal departments. And that concludes my report. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions? Marilyn? Marilyn? Steve Shaw?
Uh, when I look at all of the programming and I just think from a um employee, faculty, staff, um, all the above and what you guys are doing, I think it's pretty innovative and very well-rounded and so um congratulations on leadership and, and also continuing to look at what the team needs. I'm going to assume some of this too, um, I don't know how it, and again, this is, I keep thinking I've been almost a year now. Um, but where some of the, your advisory pieces come, it, to me, it looks very well-rounded and so when I think about whether it's through the climate survey or the, your surveys um on needs of the employees. What drives your decisions, I guess, is my question.
Okay, so yeah, so the college actually does a lot of surveys and I'm just, I'm talking a little bit to give Dee some time to think as well, so it, the climate surveys certainly, um and there are groups that we have, the action teams. Prior to the climate survey for three years, every other year, we'd had engagement surveys again for employees. We have lots of student assessments, so there's, there's lots of feedback and information as well as being in touch with what's going on nationally within organizations and our environment, what's, what's happening and what's needed, so. I'm going to stop there and let Dee.
All of those are correct, and we also participate in a lot of other surveys, uh, Employers Council, SHRM, and, and a number of other surveys that, that track a lot of the, this data that we are provided, so. And, and uh we also receive a lot of resources around mental health, uh, around workforce development. Uh, and so those are the things that help drive some of the decisions we make on what programs uh we continue to offer and the utilization. If they're being utilized well at here, then we will continue to provide those services.
I guess I would also jump in and say, um, you know, you, all, each of you have recognized the incredible employees that we have. We have high-level professionals who know their stuff, who are well-connected, not only locally but nationally. So in addition to obviously surveys and environmental scans, we have excellent professionals who know what also needs to happen when we're working through a problem or we're having a conversation that we need and, you know, what are the possible outcomes, what are the possible needs here? So there's also those informal, informal conversations about what do we just all know collectively based on the data and how do we move forward?
And the great networking opportunities we have with individuals within the community and in Colorado.
Want to introduce um John for the Cleary Annual Report?
Yes, I'd like to introduce John Fultz, who is the Director of Campus Safety and Security, who will present the annual Cleary Report for you, and thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, Chair Oxlinger, Board, Dr. Bornstein. Um, real quick, I'm going to run through this year's annual security report. Um, just a reminder that this is the two thousand twenty-two report, but these are statistics from two thousand twenty-one, we always go back a year. So the official name of the annual Gene Cleary Report uh was begun in nineteen eighty-six after a young lady that was attending Lehigh University was brutally raped in her uh dorm room. Um, come to find out, the, the college had a history of a lot of crime going on on, on the campus. So after that, a federal mandate came out to require all college, colleges that are federally funded to report certain statistics that happen on their campuses. So it's a process of collecting, counting, and classifying crimes, um, which includes issuing campus alerts. There's a timely warning or emergency notification like Dee talked about with our rave system. Those are the reports that we also send out to say that um there's a snow closure or something like that going on. Um, and this report is published every year and has to be published by October the first. The report consists of eight criminal offenses that we have to report on. Um, here's a list of them right here, I don't, not going to read them all for you, but these are the, are what we have to report for. And we are held to a certain area, not just on our campus, what the federal mandate stipulates as goes from street, from sidewalk street to sidewalk, so anything that happens on that, not just our campus, so. Right when you get to Seven Eleven over there, that's on, on the east side of uh, of this campus, we wouldn't report there. But if it happened on the sidewalk right by Seven Eleven, we would have to re- report it on our, our crimes. Um, alcohol violations and drug violations, weapon violations, um, although we do have some of these, they are very uh strict on our reporting on what goes through the Dean of Students' Office. If uh Shannon's office uh issues some kind of a disciplinary action to a student that's caught on our campus with one of these on uh whether it be alcohol or drug violation, then that is reflective on the crime report. On campus is any, any building on our campus, so any building on the Greeley campus, non-campus, that's a, that includes our Ames to UNC program. So we have students that are in Ames to UNC program that attend both schools and if they live in the dorms, if they get into any kind of issues over there, they have to go through the disciplinary process at UNC and Ames, that is reflective on our Cleary Report as well as UNC's Cleary Report. And that's a, a coordination of myself and the Title IX uh, or the Cleary Coordinator over at UNC that we get together and make sure we have the same statistics and, and reflect them. Public property is just if we have any uh property off-campus that we control that's uh supports the educational mission of Ames. And then uh in nineteen, in two thousand thirteen, it was passed the Bala Act, which is a Violence Against Women's Act. So this covers all the domestic and dating violence. So any of those that happen, any kind of um racial crimes that happen or hate crimes that happen on campus, we are also required to reflect, uh, reflect those in the statistics as well. As you can see, we uh, I like to say this is a pretty good year when I can uh uh reach out to all the local police departments and they come back and say they have nothing. Um, that is mandated by the federal reporting as well, that I reach out to the local police departments and get those statistics. Um, and we had all zeros on our report, so um, two thousand twenty-one was a really good year. Any questions? Yes?
Um, do you report just on the Greeley campus or it's Greeley, Windsor, Fort Lupton, everyone?
Every campus, including the airport now, this year is included there. And I also have to go back to three years, it has to be the last three years, except for that line that you saw in there was just for two thousand twenty-one. Yes?
Um, we're good, we're in the, are we in the process of changing kind of how we manage security at the college in the sense of um Sheriff's Department and things like that?
Yeah, we, we still have SRO with the Sheriff's Department, we're, we'll be going down to one at the end of the year here, one SRO. Um, but we are bringing a lot of that security internally. Um, and I don't know if you remember, I introduced a couple of the new guys that came on recently. Um, and a good thing about those guys, they have all had law enforcement backgrounds. So they have all been through, they all have law enforcement training, they're required to do uh law enforcement qualifications with their weapons and everything like that, so. Yes, a lot of it's being brought inside, I think we're feeling that same effect that Dee talked about as far as hiring with our contracted company. They're having really hard issues hiring security.
What, what's the, the best, I guess, well, kind of shares, having them onboarded still? Is it just because of that is kind of more of an official?
Um, really good answer, uh, really good question, I mean, um, it's really helpful for us because all but now two of our campuses, which is the airport and the Lublin, fall under the jurisdiction of Will County. So when I pull statistics, um, I don't even have to pull them annually from them, they send them to me monthly, so I keep up on them, so I, I have. I don't even have to pull them annually from them. They send them to me monthly, so I keep up on them. So I have them. I don't have to necessarily reach out to all the local police departments because Well County has jurisdiction over all those campuses. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. What's that? Oh. You know, I would just say, you know, I, when I connected with the Union Colony Emergency Manager from the Union Colony High School when I first started, he told me, he's like, one thing he does is he takes every year, his year by the the school year. And if his boss, whereas Dee, as the HR, my, I mean, Employee Services boss or the president, doesn't have to come and contact you as a board or contact somebody's family and say, somebody's not going to make it home tonight. That's what keeps me up at night. So and I, we try to do everything to prevent that. And it's a collaborative effort, not just from campus safety and security. I think it's from all to see something and say something. One thing I was going to say is thank you to the Cabinet and Dr. Bornstein and Dr. Rockmer for all the support of the last three years. We have had the Sheriff's Office, Greeley PD, everybody training out here. And I don't know if you guys know, but I've been training with the FBI for the last two months. And one of the things, their SWAT guys came to me. They are so excited over our SimCity in Windsor, and they're like, how much do you think it costs us to come and train out there? And I said, let me talk to my president. I think I can, I can work something out for you. All right. So it's those things like that and that's known and it's getting out there. And I don't even know how the FBI found about that. They contacted me. So I mean, those things like that are really helping us. So I really appreciate it. I know it's, it's a headache sometimes because there's interruption. It's never convenient when it interrupts the services or you see all that. It triggers people to see all that on the, on the campus sometimes, but the support I get where I never get a no, I appreciate that from Cabinet and Dr. B.
Well, I, I think I speak for the board when I say we certainly appreciate you and I know you have our total support. When we look up here and see all those zeros, I think that speaks very highly to your presence and your effectiveness on campus. So thank you very much. Marilyn?
I would just echo. I mean, I read the report and I thought with where society is today and all of the violence, thefts, I mean, I look at motor theft and I think we're number one in the country, Colorado is, and you have a zero up there. I can't even say that about my hospital. So I, you know, I, it just, it's a culture piece, John, and I think you do a great job leading. It's you get out on the campus and you can feel it and you can feel safety and security. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, John. Do we have any supervisors here that want to introduce new employees? Please jump up to the podium.
And then told me I had to jump, so I jumped. Good afternoon. I'd like to introduce you to Dr. Nicholas Spezza, who's our new Associate Vice President of Academic Affairs. Comes to us from Front Range Community College and not only a senior leader in academic affairs, but will be overseeing our workforce development, high school programs, and satellite campuses. Welcome.
We've got a whole bunch of them. Good afternoon. I have the pleasure of introducing you to Christina Edwards. I'm a little remiss in not having done this before, but she is the Director of Events. Got here a handful of months ago, and she's been building out her team who is here. So she's going to come up and introduce them.
Good afternoon. It's nice to meet you all. I'm really excited to be here at Ames and to have the opportunity to build this team, build up our events program. So since I started August 1, I have welcomed three new team members to join Jackie in in the events team. So I've got Kelly Porter is an events manager, Anna Hunt is an events manager, and then Rebecca Alvarez is our staff associate who will be supporting the whole team.
Those new employees. There, that concludes the president's report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. B. Next is item 11, or 10, rather, reflections and comments from board members about Ames. Remember, this is, this section is not about the meeting. It's about Ames. So anybody have any comments they would like to make about Ames College? We're good.
I'll just say, from the New York City Conference and speaking to other people from other community colleges throughout the nation, you know, Ames is just a gem again, and I can't really say a gem in the rough because we're not rough anymore. This is an amazing facility. We have wonderful employees and staff, faculty, and I think our students speak for themselves as well. But I also like to say this room is just amazing and the screens are huge. I don't think we had this last time. This is amazing. So I appreciate it.
Thank you, Heidi. Anybody else? Well, I pretty much said, I kind of got ahead of myself a little bit on this topic when I talked during our assessment of the conferences about how how Ames is so far out there on the leading edge of colleges across the nation and what a great job we do. And it's due to, I'll give us a little bit of credit here, the support of a board. And but you've all out there earned that support and that respect from the board with the incredible job that you've done and the professionals that you continue to exhibit yourselves to be. So I once again am very proud to be associated with Ames College. Always have been, always will be. And that's, oh, that's how I see Ames. So nobody else? We'll move on then to number 11, assessment of the board meeting. What did we learn? What worked? What didn't work? Did we focus on oversight, strategy, challenges? Did we receive the information we needed? Did we have an effective conversation? Did we, everyone have the opportunity to speak? Did we spend our time focusing on vision and purpose? And did the board speak with one voice? Any comments on any of those by anyone?
I'll make a comment.
Please.
Yes.
Gene, you need to learn to be a little more succinct. I would echo that. I think we had a great meeting. Everybody here did a great job. The presentations were great. I really like the summaries in our packets that that we get now so we can read what's going on on campus and everything and then enjoy hearing the highlights here at the meeting. I think that makes a very enjoyable and meaningful meeting for all of us. So I think that has worked out very well. So we certainly, I think, presented as a team today. I think we exhibited our focus and our mission, and I think we did a great job. Anybody else? Okay. I think everybody has spoken. Certainly had the opportunity. It's one of the items. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion in two seconds. Do you adjourn? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. We're adjourned. Thank you all very much.